I know you're fine. And that's reasonable. I have one. They're not, they're not. They can't be.
Sent an email to myself to talk to Mike tomorrow.
Good evening, everyone. Seven o'clock. We'll start our city council meeting tonight for the city of Casa Grande. Welcome, everyone. I'll call the meeting to order. And our first two items on our agenda, we will do simultaneously. We have the invocation. And I know I got a notice on who was going to be here for the invocation. Is he here? Oh, see Sean? All right. Well, since he's not here, then I'll call on my fellow council member, Pastor Anthony. And please, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance after our invocation.
Father God, we come to you, Lord. We want to thank you, Lord, for once life, health, and strength. We thank you, Lord, for another opportunity that we can come together as a city. Father God, all of our leaders, our mayor and city councilmen, that we can come and work together for the unity of our city, that we can continue to be led by you in all the things that we do and all the things that we say, that all glory, honor, and praise will always be yours. Give us the wisdom and the knowledge that we need, that we can construct this meeting in the rightful eyes of you. And you will be glorified for all the things that we do. And we give you honor and praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Anthony. You get double credit tonight.
Double credit.
Double your pay.
You get double credit, and we'll double your pay.
And a snicker.
All right. Let the roll call show that everyone's present except Mr. Lavender, who's in Washington, DC. So if someone would like to offer an excuse for Mr. Lavender.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Please excuse Mr. Lavender and note everyone else is present. All right, the minutes. Item C.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve minutes of the council regular meeting of March 4th, 2024. Also, accept the minutes of the Casa Grande Arts and Culture Commission meeting of February 6th, 2024, as well as accept minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of February 1st, 2024.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. Claims against the city, item D.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims dated February 28 through March 12, 2024, as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the claims are approved, minutes approved, meeting agenda approval. Anyone have any changes for the agenda? Mr. Rains?
We have no changes.
And we do have an executive session, so I will note that we'll move the reports, which is item N, to come before item N. Or, excuse me, M. N before M. Any other changes from anyone?
No.
Okay. Seeing no changes, I'll entertain a motion to approve as agended.
So moved.
Agended?
Agended.
Did I just say agended?
You did say agended, but we, we.
Amended.
Amended.
I got it. It's just the N and the Ms. I'm troubled tonight.
M and M.
Okay. So moved. Do I have a second? Okay, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the agenda is approved. All right, consent agenda items. These, all these listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Is there anything that anyone wants to remove? Anybody, anyone from the public? All right, seeing none, then entertain a motion.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Yvonne, can I please get a roll call vote? See, I didn't mess it up yet.
It's good.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Count, Mayor Protem Edwards?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right. All right, the next section is our public comments. This is an opportunity for the public to address the council. I would ask that if you are so inclined, you would approach the lectern and state your name and your address for the records. I do have, is it two people, I guess? You guys want to talk together? You can come on up. Kate, Chloe?
Do they get six minutes?
That would still hold you three minutes, though, since you're a tag team.
That's okay. We are with the Habitat for Humanity of Central Arizona, and we have built several homes in the Pinal County area in the last couple of years. And we have three more parcels that we are going to be building, one each fiscal year beginning this fall. So we brought some flyers. So we're here kind of on a twofold mission. One is to let people know that if you yourself, or your friends, or your neighbors, or your family are looking for a home, Habitat does not give them away. We sell them with a zero interest loan, which makes them affordable. And so we have flyers to talk about that. And then also, if you work for a company, an organization, or a church, and are interested in helping sponsor or volunteer to build the houses, we have to raise $120,000 for the sticks and bricks for the house. And so we're just here looking for support on both the efforts. We hope to begin a home this fall. We have a great leadership team. You want to talk about them, Chloe?
Yeah, absolutely. So our leadership team is composed of Fred and Fred Garcia and Chris Sharp, and they are both Pinal County residents. And they are absolutely wonderful. Chris Sharp is actually a Habitat homeowner, so he's very invested in the whole project.
Very cool.
Our team leaders are very well trained, and they are the ones who actually lead the volunteers on these builds. And so they are very invested in, in the county and in helping get the sponsorship dollars as well as volunteers out. We are also looking for volunteers as well. This is a kind of all hands on deck project, and it's, it's actually a lot of fun. I just had the opportunity to go on and build myself with Chris and Fred. And they're absolutely wonderful leaders, and it's just, it's a really, really great opportunity for everyone to get involved in the county. But yeah, they're great.
So if you have any questions, please, see, as we put a phone number in the record.
I see it.
And.
And then you can leave your flyers with Mr. Rains over here.
Okay, we will do that.
And then Larry, I want to make sure I get a copy and probably copy the council, too.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies. Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak to council? I did forget to comment that we can't comment back to you on this because it's not an agendized item, but appreciate your comments. Okay, seeing none, then I'm going to close the public comment. We'll move to Ward of Contracts. I won. Danny?
Good evening, Mayor McFarland, Mayor Protem Edwards and members of the council. This is regards to the City Hall Landscape Project, Project Grant Acceptance from the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority, better known as WIFA. The Community Services Department applied for and awarded the $150,000 grant, and we recommend the acceptance of this grant from WIFA for the City Hall Landscape Project. Currently, the Community Services CIP City Hall Landscape Project was approved, approved through the regular budget process. There's $250,000 for the project. An additional $10,000 was awarded to the project from the Lincoln Institute or Babbitt Center. The project budget will now be $410,000. The project will replace the irrigation system at City Hall Campus. And with modern equipment and controls, in addition, landscaping will be altered to eliminate non-functional turf areas and convert to desert landscaping where possible. This project will assist in the goal of reducing water, irrigation water consumption. Rix Engineering has been, has completed about 80% of the design phase already. They started the design not knowing if we were going to receive this grant or not. So they've been, we've been communicating with them. Once the divide is complete, obviously, we'll be going through the advisory board, the regular RFP process, and again, for you to, to see the designs before approval's done, once we get a contract to complete the project. So just you can envision a little bit of where we're going with this. Now, we're going to be replacing them all on the north side as well. We're focusing on the turf area on the southeast lawn area. We're going to be incorporating sidewalks to that center. You can see that hole there. So there's going to be some nice bench areas for people to sit. The designer's going to put places where we can put signs to talk about the watershed, to talk about different things going on. So we're going to utilize the current system to have different landscaping as you, and there'll be different dividers. It's hard to explain on how the design is because it's not complete yet. But the inside of the hole will actually have more of a, a water system with different plants. And as you go higher up, it'll have different levels of what kind of plants grow at different elevations. So that's a little bit of an idea on where that goes. So my hopes are that you'll approve the acceptance of this grant. So just wanted to know if you had any questions.
Matt? We saw this plan two years ago, maybe, like the preliminary, or?
Possibly, yes. I wasn't here at that time.
Yeah. Do you remember, Larry? Because someone was asking about it.
Is it similar to that, Larry?
Like with the round, I think that's.
Some of the stone walls and stuff.
Yes.
Yeah, approximately two years ago, we did share some concept, concepts with the mayor and council. And approximately eight months ago, I guess, maybe six now, we thought we had received this WIFA grant, but learned that it took six affirmative votes to, for it to be approved. And we were happy to learn that we did get the six on the second attempt. And so, but yes, it's, it's all the same project that we've been discussing for approximately two years now.
And you're going to identify some of the plant, the plants with like placards?
That's our plan. So our hopes are with the Save It program that we're able to not just be able to provide a nice area for people to sit and see what kind of landscape we have and save water, but to also educate them on the possibilities of zero scape at their own homes is, is part of the plan of doing that as well. So, and some of the retention walls in the front area need to be redone with the drainage, especially on the north side. And the, we're going to probably be replacing some of those plants and things and go to better, better trees and plants. And if you talked to our park superintendent, he's very passionate about the appropriate trees and shrubs in certain places. So since his project's coming forward, he has the opportunity to, to put the appropriate trees and, and shrubs in, in place.
Any questions from anybody?
No.
Thank you, Danny.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I think this is a great project. This is, we, like I said, I think we saw this several years ago. So it's nice to see this back. I'll entertain a resolution, please, Yvonne?
Resolution number 5634, a resolution of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing and ratifying the submission of a grant application to the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority, WIFA, authorizing the city manager to accept grant funds, authorizing the city manager to execute a grant agreement, authorizing the city finance director to accept and disburse funds as necessary, and authorizing the transfer of budget authority.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve resolution number 5634 as presented.
Second. All right, I have a motion and a second. Yvonne, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protempore Edwards?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right. Well, there you go, Danny. Let's get those trees planted.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on our agenda is item J1, which is our boards and commissions. This is a request to approve the appointment of Robert White to the Board of Adjustments with the term to extend to November 17th of 2024. Is Robert here tonight? Yeah, I don't see him either. Well, just want to, number one, thank him for, for volunteering to be on this board. This is a very important board, and we appreciate his, his stepping up. So anybody have any questions on this, or can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, congratulations, Robert. And you'll be contacted by Mr. Paul Tice. Thank you, Paul. All right. I think that's about it. We're just going to have to do reports. And so we'll go to N, item N, reports, and I'll start to my left. Person who's been out of town for a month.
Just a couple of things. Attended Pinal County Fair this past weekend. I know many people were out there. It was really great to see all of our 4H kids out there. Also participated in the high school mock interviews. I know several of us did that about a week and a half ago. And it was really encouraging to see so many students that came through. And I know I interviewed quite a few. I was really impressed with the level of them being prepared. So that was really interesting. And then I also wanted to mention the group, the Power of 100 Women. It's an organization in Pinal County that was started about five years ago. And once a year, they meet, we meet, once a year, we donate $100, and they, they pick one organization across the county. And it was really encouraging. This year, I attended, and there was three different organizations, and the disabled American veterans was chosen this year. And it's really an interesting process because everybody's so busy. But there, I think the membership is well over 100 now. And so all the money 100% goes to this organization. And so it, again, and it's women all over Pinal County. So it was just a really nice way to, to help our nonprofits. And that's it.
All right, Matt?
Thanks, Mayor. I wanted to give a sincere thank you and shout out to Sol Leva from the Community Services, along with Danny Gallegos and his assistant, Melinda Ashley. They are, Danny and Sol escorted the Youth Commission members to Washington, DC for Action Pact, would you say, Danny? Five days? Unfortunately, I couldn't attend, so I appreciate you going. And he said they had a great time. There's hope for the future, which I knew. So I'm glad more people get to meet our kids. And I'm sure they'll be here to give us a full report at some point. But I wanted to, they went above and beyond to do that with their family lives and everything. So I do appreciate that. Speaking of the Youth Commission, April 20th, Saturday, April 20th, is the shredding day at First American Credit Union. So get ready for that. And following that will be the Rotary, Denim, and Diamonds event, which I always have two events on the same day personally. But hey, that's what we're here for. And, yep. And then, good news, I thought, Mayor will probably hit this, but HB 2570 got vetoed, would take away our zoning. But I did talk to our senator the other day, TJ Shope, and he said that they did move it to cities, 70,000 and more. So we, we would have probably squeaked by for a few years, but they were, they were looking out for us somewhat. So I just wanted to give them credit for that. But I'm glad we don't have to even think about it right now. On a happier note, I don't know if you guys heard, but the Taco Fest is happening on March 30. And it's 1:00 PM to 9:00 PM. There's all kinds of local entertainment and.
$10 tickets.
$10 tickets before, $15 day of. There'll be vendors, there'll be entertainment, Native American, Hispanic mariachis, and then Roger Klein and the Peacemakers are playing that night. And there may be fireworks. I'm just saying, it's going to be a good time. So make sure it's at Dave, Dave White Park, the inaugural Taco Fest. And hats are available.
Do we wear our hats?
Yes, absolutely. Where else are you going to wear it?
Do we wear it? Do we get in free?
Halloween.
I'll pay for your ticket.
Anthony?
Tacos. No, no reports allowed.
Lisa? Lisa?
Just heard the CG Helps Alliance for Easter is March 30. And the Elks right down the street here on Florence Boulevard is going to be giving away Easter baskets. So it's going to be a drive-through Easter basket giveaway. So it's first come, first served. They'll be donating those on March 30 at 10:00 AM. So also attended the Penale County Fair. And of course, it's great to see so many young people involved. But I did want to also credit a lot of our business community and ad community for all of their support for these young people. I mean, you know, talking to some of these young kids, you know, they barely break even on the amount of money they invest in raising their animals. And so I just watched how all these, Penale Forty was there, you know, buying one after another, you know, of these animals. And, and same with our ad community and business community. So it's just such a great program. It has been around for years and years and years. And just wanted to thank again, not only the participants, but, but the businesses that support all of these, these young people. State of the city, thank you to all our staff and everyone who participated. Mayor, great job. Last one, but you're going to still be there. So we, we're not going to say last one. We know you'll be there.
I'll be around. And tacos.
Tacos. And the Boys and Girls Club Dancing for the Stars is this Saturday. So if anyone's going, that's going to be a lot of fun. Great fundraiser for the Boys and Girls Club. And finally, the Caesar Chavez Committee, these two ladies are on the committee with me, as well as Jeff Lavender. We're going to be giving over $40,000 in scholarships this year. So the event is going to take place April 12. So if anyone wants to join us at the Neon Sign Park, we're not having a dinner this year. We're hoping next year, you know, we go back to the dinners. But since COVID, we've just gone to this, this type of program. But we're excited to give, to give this to, to the students in Penale County. So, yeah, so that's it for me.
The scholarship's the most important.
It is most important.
Yeah. Bob?
No report, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Well, a lot going on on March 30. Also, the plein air painting competition is on the 30. So that starts registration for artists at 7:30 in the morning. But you can be done in time to go to the Taco Fest. Yeah, it's an all-day event.
City cleanup.
And get your, get your Easter basket on, on the way.
Yep.
And the cleanup.
Yes.
Easter basket.
Easter basket.
And cleanup, that's right.
At 7:30.
I'm not sure I'm going to make it all. Also, I want to remind everybody, we, we have two openings still for the Historic Preservation Commission. We interviewed one young lady tonight who's actually on our, a part of our class this year. And so, in fact, we approved her, so I'll give you that sheet. Sorry, I haven't done that yet. But we still have two openings. So if you know anybody, it meets on the fourth Monday of each month, and not always the same, or not always every month. I think they've been averaging about every other month for their meetings. So if you have any inclination to be on that, please reach out to the city clerk's office and fill out an application. I also want to remind everybody that we are working on the Quartzon Sewer Improvement, which Anthony so well documented in his, a part of the presentation.
Without the taco hat.
Without the taco hat. And, but it's going to start to move off of the non-busy side of Quartzon onto the community side of Quartzon. It's going to run all the way from the water treatment facility all the way to Henness. So at some point in time, it will affect about everybody in town. So I want to warn you all, if you want to keep track of it, it is on our, our website. You can see the map, and it'll tell you what, each section that they're working on. So please, that, and we'll, we'll probably continue to send out the alerts, the CG alerts, to remind everybody, because I know we're going to get calls. Because people aren't going to pay attention until it affects them. So anyway, just keep that in mind. Also, Arizona At Work, they have a, kind of a public outreach that they're doing. It's going to be on March 18 from 11 to 1:00 PM. It'll be up at CAC Campus in, in room 1400. It's an opportunity, if you're looking for jobs, or if you're a business looking for workers. It is today. How come I just got this? Well, never mind. It's already, it's already happened. So check that, check that off. Clear, clear it out of your memory banks. No need to remember that one. March 18.
No problem.
It's today. Okay. Also, we are submitting for about 18 of our local nonprofits to the Gila River Community, the sum of about $2.3 million in grant requests. So we'll keep our fingers crossed that, that our local nonprofits will be generously considered by the Gila River Indian Community. So we usually do get some, some grants from them. So this is probably the most I think we've ever applied for, though, isn't it, Larry? Yeah, so, all right. I think that's probably enough. I-10 Widening, if you haven't seen it, they are putting barricades up at the Gila River Bridge. That is for the new construction of the bridge. And you'll begin to see other construction begin up towards Wild Horse Pass as they move towards Casa Grande. Unfortunately, our section may be one of the last that they do. But at least it has begun.
Yes.
So that's an update. And as, as we move through this, there are some websites, if you want to go to ADOT's website, you can actually follow the progress, and it will show you all of the details for every overpass, every interchange, and all of the details. In fact, as they move through this, they do have, they'll have some flyovers and some, some actual video that they'll show how, how the process will take place. If people are interested. All right, I think that's it. Anybody else? Anything? Anyone? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to move into the executive session.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you all for being here. And only took up 27 minutes of your day.